Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 9th, 2008. We're here in John F. Raro Council Chambers, Room 340, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to welcome our guests that are here in Council Chambers, our city employees that have joined us, as well as members of the public. We also want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live every council meeting and rebroadcasts us each evening. Those meetings are available also online at la-city.org. If you'd like to click on the link on the left-hand of the page, you can catch webcasts of our council meetings, and archived footage of our past council meetings are available as well. Finally, through your telephone, you can always call Council Phone, which is a service of the Information Technology Agency. That number is 213-621-CITY. 213-621-CITY, and you can listen in to the proceedings of the council and any of our committees as well. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti. I've been joined today by my colleagues, Council members Cardenas, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, and Zine. We now have eight members, and we're waiting two more of our 15-member body to constitute two-thirds, or a quorum. I'd like to ask the following council members to come down pursuant to council rules. You should be here in your seats at the beginning of the meeting. Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Gruel, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Perry, and Councilmember Weiss. If you'll please join us as soon as possible. Councilmember Labons is expected at 10:40, and Mr. Weezer is excused on city business today. We have agendas available in the back of the room. Those are also made available 72 hours in advance, online, or in the city clerk's office, or here in Council Chambers. Anyone who'd like to be heard for public comment on items that have been noticed for a public hearing, need only fill out a speaker card in the back, hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms at either side, and we will make sure to get your comments in today. We also have a section of the meeting each time called General Public Comment for items that are under our jurisdiction but not on the agenda. And again, just fill out a speaker card and put "Public Comment" in upper right, hand it to one of the guards, and we'll be happy to hear your comments. All items receive a public hearing either in committee or in council. We also have a capacity to take public comments from Van Nuys City Hall, where we meet on the first Friday of the month, as we did this past Friday, but we can have a video teleconferencing capability, and we can hear you and see you here in Council Chambers if Van Nuys is closer to where you live. We now have 10 members, so Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labons, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendahl returns a favor, and Mr. Parks seconds. Without objection, those will be approved as well. Next order of business.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
All right, now it's time for the Pledge of Allegiance, which we do every Tuesday to begin the week. Ms. Hahn, will you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? If I can ask everybody to please rise.
Yeah, okay. Just call it forward. Please join with me in pledging allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, someday.
Okay, if we can run through the agenda, please.
Item one is a public convenience or necessity item in Council District 15, and the recommendation is to grant the application.
All right, Ms. Hahn moves that without objection. On item number one, if we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Items two through four are building and safety liens. Notice for public hearing. The department reports that all three items may be received and filed in as much as all the liens have been paid. However, there is a card on item two.
Okay, we'll call two special for card from the public. Move to receive and file the other two. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Let's hold five on the desk till we have a 12th member, please. Next items.
Items six through nine are items which-
Hold on, we have Ms. Gruel just walked in, so why don't we take up item five, please? Actually, we have a card on that, so let's call that special for card from the public. Next items.
Items six through nine are items which public hearings have been held. On item nine, there is a request to continue that matter one week to September 16th.
Any objection to continuing that item to the 16th? If not, that will be ordered. Next items.
That leaves you six through eight.
Okay, or seven through eight?
Six.
Sorry, oh, six through eight. It was nine that was continued?
Nine was continued.
Got you. I thought it was six. All right, we have six through eight. Any members wishing to call those special, six through eight? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on six through eight. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 10 through 31 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a request to continue item 19 two weeks to September 23rd.
Okay. Any objection to continuing 19 to September 23rd? Seeing none for that, we'll continue item 19. Do we have cards on the public on some of these?
There are, Mr. President. Item 17?
Mm-hmm.
20?
Yep.
29 and 31.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards on the public. We'll open and close the other public hearings, Ms. Hahn.
I need 28.
28. You'd like to call special?
Thank you.
16.
And 16 for Mr. Cardenas. Other specials? Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing no other specials from the ca-- Ms. Perry?
We vote on 18.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote on the bounce.
12 ayes.
Fourth with on 18.
Okay, without objection, we'll send 18 forthwith, and that will... On item 30, that passed, so jurisdiction is asserted by Prop 245 on item 30. Okay, that'll take us back to general public comment. Is that right? Now it's time for general public comment. This is, again, to remind folks, for items that are under our jurisdiction but not before the city council on our agenda today, but nevertheless part of city business, we have two minutes per speaker, and there's a clock to help guide your comments, a code of conduct as well there, to make sure that we can hear you and listen to you in the most civil manner possible. We have Michael Hubman as our first speaker. After Mr. Hubman will be Arnold Sacks. Mr. Hubman?
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Michael Hubman. I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist. This month, a friend of mine was arrested while doing community watch. The police told him they were doing a narcotics investigation. Two hours later, they charged him with resisting arrest. I know these people. They would never carry drugs or do anything to give the police an excuse. After all, they watched the police up close. Last week, I watched two policemen squeeze a man between two horses. They didn't detain him. They didn't get off their horses. They just gave him a little extrajudicial squeeze. That same week, I watched, at the same intersection, I watched a lead officer jaywalk on his second trip across. He told me that the intersection, that the light was too long. We are being policed by hypocrites. We are being policed by police run amok. We are being policed by police who cannot take criticism. And in your name, we are being policed by police that are engaged in socio-economic cleansing. And if that sounds familiar, it's taken from ethnic cleansing, as was perpetrated on the people of Bosnia-Herzegovina by the likes of Radovan Karadž, and we know where he is. Los Angeles City Council, you can do better. Los Angeles City Council, you've got to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubman. Appreciate your comments very much. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After Mr. Sacks will be Zuma Dog.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, I wanted to go over an item that was on last week's agenda. It seems that the Housing Community and Economic Development Committee report provided an increase of a contract from $730,000-plus to $1,160,000, an increase of $430,000 for monitoring program for affordable housing units. It seems to me that the affordable housing pool is shrinking, along with the square foot required for housing, yet the compensation for the companies watching out for the city's benefit is increasing. Why is that so? And why is a contract that was $730,000 increased by over 50% without any public comment? Then I'd like to go on to something else. Unfortunately, Councilman Alarcon is not here, but he was wrong about the San Fernando Valley bus wait getting allocated $100 million, and nothing was being done. It's now over $200 million because $100 million is lost, and you're going to want to do the bus wait. It's going to cost $100 million plus. And finally, tomorrow, and I'm reading from the information I got from SCAG, which is Southern California Area Governance, is having a executive director's report. SCAG is sponsoring a gas summit tomorrow at the Los Angeles Omni Hotel. Of course, it costs money, but I would invite all the council members to go up, because of all the gas passed by this council under the auspices of dialogue, you guys would be natural leaders there. Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Zuma Dog is our next speaker. After that will be Sky Anderson.
Yes, thank you so much, Zuma Dog. And in case I run out of time, I have a very important announcement. We have election season coming up. I'm about to shock everybody in the county. As Zuma Dog is here to say, we must elect Bernard Parks Board of County Supervisors. That's right, I just lost half my constituency. We are all aware that possibly he's not our favorite person that we would like to see up there. However, one must consider both names on the ballot. And so, yes, Bernard Parks versus Mark Ridley Thomas. Zuma Dog says you cannot just sit here and say, "Well, gee, I don't like Parks on a lot of things, so I'm just going to do nothing. There's no way I could vote for him." That will put the county into the hands of Mayor Antonio Villarreal and all of his stuff. You know, I first said, "Gee." I thought that Mayor Antonio would be endorsing Councilmember Parks, because usually the mayor will endorse the council member running.
Excuse me, Mr. President. The county Board of Supervisors election is not within the jurisdiction of this city.
If we can make sure it's on this, on city business. Thank you.
Okay. That's the Board of County Supervisors. That's city business. I want all council members to please vote for Bernard Parks, because we cannot have Mark Ridley Thomas become Board of County Supervisor.
He is still not within-
Okay, I'll move on. I'll move on.
Please, Mr. Dog.
Let me say this. I need to say some things to the council. Here's why you need to respect Zuma Dog and listen to what I say, and don't interrupt me. Okay, people say, "Why do you come here every day, Zuma Dog?" Let me read you some of the comments from over the weekend, Zuma Dog. And this is city business, because I want to get credibility with council, and here's what I represent. "Zuma Dog, I enjoyed you on the radio, and I quickly signed up for your blog. I'm now retired in Orange County, but really appreciate what you're doing." Here's another one. "One of these days, I want to meet or talk to you. You're one of the most effective things happening in L.A."
Mr. President, he's still not talking about a matter within the jurisdiction of the city. It should be warned.
We've got the warning. If you'll please cut. Thank you. Our next speaker is Sky Anderson. Mr. Dog, Mr. Dog, can you please remove Mr. Dog? I've asked you to put your voice. Mr. Anderson, please leave the chambers, Mr. Dog. You've been warned numerous times. Thank you. Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
I'm Sky Anderson. I'm a community activist. I've been a resident of Los Angeles for about nine years. When we start this meeting, we take the pledge of allegiance to the United States. It's one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. The nation being destroyed by alcohol and drug abuse. You might rephrase that. One nation under alcohol with possible addiction and suffering for all. Mr. Einstein said, "The world is a dangerous place, not because of those who do evil, but because of those who ignore evil." I know the city council people are rich. I know the media is rich. They couldn't care less that innocent children die because of drug and alcohol abuse. As a reporter for the LA Times, Bob Poole won't write an article about how the Chamber of Commerce, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, got a lot of publicity because of the absolute vodka. Was going to repair these, pay to repair these. Bob Poole will not write an article about it. Why? Because he's too rich, he's too popular, and he doesn't want to risk his reputation. He's treasonous. Mrs. McCain, Cindy McCain, owns a huge beer distributing company. Beer has alcohol in it. Beer is a drug, and she's making millions and millions of dollars off this drug. She's treasonous. It's destroying the United States. Mr. McCain has associated her by implication. Someone said, "We don't destroy a great nation by outside force. We destroy a great nation by suicide." The United States of America is committing suicide. Why? Because people who are too rich, too popular, won't take a stand, like that Mr. Einstein said. Costs Los Angeles County $10 billion a year because of alcohol abuse. Six people die every day because of alcohol abuse in Los Angeles County. And why? Because the people in authority are too rich and couldn't care less what happens to our children.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. It's just a follow-up to last week. We appreciate your advocacy. The bottle that we talked about, the big bottle that's on Hollywood and Highland is on private property, unfortunately, so it remains there for another few weeks. Daniel Wright is our next speaker, and then Milian Gabriel Jesus.
Good morning, Mr. President. Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard, 90065, for the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition, which is found on the web at www.friendsofthesouthwestmuseum.com. Council members, on previous occasions during public comment, we provided you with a copy of a key page from the exhaustive 227-page Southwest Museum Rehabilitation Report. That report, prepared by Autry's own multidisciplinary team of experts, established the fact that the nationally significant Southwest Museum building can be rehabilitated to provide continuing museum exhibition service to the city of Los Angeles. Today, we have distributed to all of you key pages of a report prepared for our coalition by Thomas Martin of Cambridge, Massachusetts. And as you can see by the pages provided, he is an expert on cultural niche museums. Mr. Martin prepared a review of the financial feasibility section of the rehabilitation report prepared by Autry's own experts. Mr. Martin's conclusion was that the attendance projections for the rehabilitated Southwest Museum, properly marketed and located on the gold line, would generate 95,000 annual attendance. As the chart given to you today shows, he projected that the Southwest Museum could recover 66% of its total operating costs. He noted that, at the same time, right now, the Autry is only recovering 25% of its own costs. As noted by Autry's experts, the typical museum recovers between 30 and 50% of its operating expenses. So Autry's experts found the Southwest would recover 38%. Mr. Martin concluded 66%, and he noted that the Autry currently operates at only 25% recovery. So by what metric did the Board of the Autry declare that the Southwest Museum was not feasible? Please participate in the debate, and please pay attention to this issue. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. Our next speaker is Milian Gabriel Jesus. After that is Victor Gordo.
Yes, since September 3, I'm here in front of you guys. I'm a cab driver. My car total damaged, and I replace the car. And I speak up Department Transportation. Everybody, they ignore. Number one, by the law, I know the law not to remove it, but I'm asking every Chamber of Commerce here to help me. I don't have enough money to pay $626 with penalty, but the ticket is wrong given to me now. I found out commercial trailer. It doesn't say taxi, and it's a passenger car taxi. And they give me where I live, a residence area. Now I talk to the manager. They remove another person. They give me temporary with a new car. But I need help to get in the road to seal my car. They cannot stop me. I'm crying in front of you to help. I'm not handicapped. And you have a power to help me, to extend, and on the court, I'm going to remove this, but I don't have time at this time, and I'm broke. And I don't have to have money to pay for my rent also. And I need your help to extend it, and at the same time to seal my car. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel Jesus. For yourself, anybody else? We do have the city clerk who can assist you. We have a full-time person here to assist you to make sure any constituent needs you have, so we'll make sure that she comes and talks to you and see if we can get to the right person. Victor-
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Victor Gordo is our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the City Council.
Morning.
My name is Victor Gordo, and I'm general counsel for Labor's Local 777. Let me first say that it brings us no joy to be here today. It's unfortunate that in the Department of Animal Services in the city of Los Angeles it's come to this. I would ask that all members or employees of the Department of Animal Services present, please stand. For some time now, we've expressed a number of concerns with the department. We've expressed concerns regarding public safety, animal welfare, employee safety, and least but last but not least, services to the people of Los Angeles. The resources have been an issue, to be fair. However, let me say that at no time, and we've had a number of general managers, and at no time have members of this department found the need to speak out. While resources are an issue, and we don't question that, the utilization of existing resources is also important. Currently, in North Central, where there are close to a million people, you have two, maybe three, officers enforcing the laws in that section of the city. In South Central, one to two people. In the Harbor, one person. In West LA, one person. In the West Valley, one person. And in the East Valley, one to two people. Why is that important? Because a number of years ago, the management of this department disbanded the special enforcement unit, which sought to make up the difference when it came to low level of resources. We're concerned about the warehousing of animals, lack of food and medical care for animals, no viable law enforcement plan, as Laura Chix recently found in her report. There's no viable adoption program. There's no follow-up for adoptions, and the-
Our next speaker is Sky Anderson. Mr. Dogg, Mr. Dogg, can you please remove Mr. Dogg? I've asked you to put your voice. Mr. Anderson, please leave the chambers, Mr. Dogg. You've been warned numerous times. Thank you. Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
I'm Sky Anderson. I'm a community activist. I've been a resident of Los Angeles for about nine years. When we start this meeting, we take the pleas, our pleas to see the United States as one nation under God with liberty and justice for all, and a nation being destroyed by alcohol and drug abuse. You might rephrase that, one nation under alcohol with possible addiction and suffering for all. Mr. Einstein said, "The world is a dangerous place, not because of those who do evil, but because of those who ignore evil." I know the city council people are rich. I know the media is rich. They couldn't care less that innocent children die because of drug and alcohol abuse. As a reporter for the L.A. Times, Bob Poole won't write an article about how the Chamber of Commerce, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, got a lot of publicity because of the absolute vodka was gonna repair these, pay to repair these. Bob Poole will not write an article about it. Why? Because he's too rich, he's too popular, and he doesn't want to risk his reputation. He's treasonous. Mrs. McCain, Cindy McCain owns a huge beer distributing company. Beer has alcohol, beer is a drug, and she's making millions and millions of dollars off this drug. She's treasonous, destroying the United States. Mr. McCain has associated her by implication. Someone said, "We don't destroy a great nation by outside force, we destroy a great nation by suicide." The United States of America is committing suicide. Why? Because people who are too rich, too popular, won't take a stand like that Mr. Einstein said. Costs Los Angeles counting $10 billion a year because of alcohol abuse. Six people die every day because of alcohol abuse in Los Angeles County. And why? Because the people in authority are too rich and couldn't care less what happens to our children.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. It's just a follow-up to last week. We appreciate your advocacy. The bottle that we talked about, the big bottle that's on Hollywood and Highland is on private property unfortunately, so it remains there for another few weeks. Daniel Wright is our next speaker, and then Milian Gebrejesus.
Good morning, Mr. President. Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard, 90065, for the Friends of the Southwest Museum Coalition, which is found on the web at www.friendsofthesouthwestmuseum.com. Councilmembers, on previous occasions during public comment, we provided you with a copy of a key page from the exhaustive 227-page Southwest Museum Rehabilitation Report. That report, prepared by Autry's own multidisciplinary team of experts, established the fact that the nationally significant Southwest Museum building can be rehabilitated to provide continuing museum exhibition service to the city of Los Angeles. Today, we have distributed to all of you key pages of a report prepared for our coalition by Thomas Martin of Cambridge, Massachusetts. And as you can see by the pages provided, he is an expert on cultural niche museums. Mr. Martin prepared a review of the financial feasibility section of the rehabilitation report prepared by Autry's own experts. Mr. Martin's conclusion was that the attendance projections for the rehabilitated Southwest Museum, properly marketed and located on the gold line, would generate 95,000 annual attendance. As the chart given to you today shows, he projected that the Southwest Museum could recover 66% of its total operating costs. He noted that, at the same time, right now, the Autry is only recovering 25% of its own costs. As noted by Autry's experts, the typical museum recovers between 30 and 50% of its operating expenses. So Autry's experts found the Southwest would recover 38%, Mr. Martin concluded 66%, and he noted that the Autry currently operates at only 25% recovery. So by what metric did the Board of the Autry declare that the Southwest Museum was not feasible? Please participate in the debate, and please pay attention to this issue. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. Our next speaker is Milian Gebrejesus. After that is Victor Gordo.
Yes, since September 3, I'm here in front of you guys. I'm a cab driver, I'm a, my car total damaged, and I replace the car. And I speak up Department Transportation, everybody, they ignore. Number one, by the law, I know, the law not to remove it. But I'm asking every Chamber of Commerce here to help me. I don't have enough money to pay $626 with penalty, but the ticket is wrong given to me now. I found out commercial trailer, it doesn't say taxi, and it is a passenger car taxi. And they give me where I live, a residence area. Now I talk to the manager, they remove another person, they give me temporary with a new car. But I need help to get in the road to seal my car. They cannot stop me. I'm crying in front of you to help. I'm not handicapped. And you have a power to help me, to extend, and on the court, I'm gonna remove this. But I don't have time at this time, and I'm broke. And I don't have to have money to pay for my rent also. And I need your help to extend it, and at the same time to seal my car. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gebrejesus. For yourself and anybody else, we do have the city clerk who can assist you. We have a full-time person here to assist you to make sure any constituent needs you have, so we'll make sure that she comes and talks to you and see if we can get to the right person.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Victor Gordo is our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the city council. My name is Victor Gordo, and I'm general counsel for Labor's Local 777. Let me first say that it brings us no joy to be here today. It's unfortunate that in the Department of Animal Services in the city of Los Angeles it's come to this. I would ask that all members or employees of the Department of Animal Services present, please stand. For some time now, we've expressed a number of concerns with the department. We've expressed concerns regarding public safety, animal welfare, employee safety, and least but, last but not least, services to the people of Los Angeles. Resources have been an issue, to be fair. However, let me say that at no time, and we've had a number of general managers, and at no time have members of this department found the need to speak out. While resources are an issue, and we don't question that, the utilization of existing resources is also important. Currently, in North Central, where there are close to a million people, you have two, maybe three, officers enforcing the laws in that section of the city. In South Central, one to two people. In the Harbor, one person. In West L.A., one person. In the West Valley, one person. And in the East Valley, one to two people. Why is that important? Because a number of years ago, the management of this department disbanded the special enforcement unit, which sought to make up the difference when it came to low level of resources. We're concerned about the warehousing of animals, lack of food and medical care for animals, no viable law enforcement plan, as the auditor controller, as Laura Chig recently found in her report. There's no viable adoption program, there's no follow-up for adoptions, and the organization as a whole is in chaos. We would also ask that you consider some of the lack of judgment that this administration has held. We've provided you a packet that includes...
Thank you, Mr. Gordo. Appreciate very much your comments. Our next speaker is Angela Hooks. Angela Hooks.
My name is Angela Hooks. I'm an animal control officer with the Department of Animal Services, and I'm going to read to you an email from someone from the rescue community. "I am Madison Barkley, a Los Angeles city resident and member of its humane community. Most everyone in this room knows me, but I'm afraid to identify myself because I believe Bokes will retaliate and stop me from helping Los Angeles Animal Services animals. I know Bokes well, I work with him closely, and soon discovered that Bokes offers smooth talking only and spends more time blogging, more time blogging about than implementing the no-kill. For example, his blog on implementing the no-kill equation in Los Angeles includes: one, trap, neuter, and release. Bokes claims he does this, but it's still not legal, and he isn't doing anything to try to change that. Spay and neuter. Right now, Bokes still has six city spay and neuter clinics at the new shelters, and he's not using any of them. Why is it September 2008 and the public still can't get their animals spayed or neutered there? Numbers three, four, five, six, and seven: rescue, fostering, adoption programs, pet retention, medical and behavioral rehabilitation programs. I grouped these together because the truth is that Bokes has no new program for any of these. His only idea is to ask the rescue groups and volunteers to do the work. He does more fostering than before, and the problem is that he has no system set in place to track these programs. Public relations and community involvement. His continuous false promises have alienated virtually the entire humane community. Additionally, look how many times the city has had to step in to force him to take down a reckless post on his city blog such as promoting hooters for neuters while publicly bashing Jewish caperot, just to name a few. The city missed the recent one where he used his city resource, the blog, to endorse candidates in the last election. Let's not forget the time that he tried to refuse owner surrender animals during hours except those in which owners could not get to the shelter." It goes on, but I'm gonna, because I'm running out of time. Also accountability. Mr. Bokes does not take accountability. And did you know that Bokes blames you, the city council members, for his bad budget? Did you know that he was also fired from his last job for the same troubles that he is having here?
Thank you very much, Ms. Hooks. Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Stacy Dancy, I believe, Stacy Dancy?
I too am representing the rescue community. I was asked to make this statement on behalf of many volunteers and members of the rescue community. This chamber would be standing room only today if it were not for the fact that a great number of volunteers and rescuers chose not to attend for fear of retribution. Many of you have met privately with individuals who feel Bokes and Barth's retribution or are victims of it. We are here today to change the leadership of L.A. Animal Services. We want leadership that is more focused on being good than looking good. Bokes and Barth borrow rhetoric and concepts of no-kill and claim success where there are failures. Bokes and Barth scrounge for programs that have long existed in L.A. Animal Services and give them cute new names. But you cannot have a successful product if you do not first build it. Bokes and Barth misrepresent data and falsely claim success. Bokes and Barth fluctuate between two extremes, warehousing or killing. They use warehousing to placate those against euthanasia, and when the shelter becomes packed, they blame those who are against the warehousing for euthanasia. What Bokes and Barth do not do is find a solution for either. We have long had enough illusions, charades, and distrust. Two and a half years is long enough. Bokes and Barth have proven that they cannot get the job done. They are not even on the right path. It is time for a change. If you give us a general manager and an assistant general manager with effective solutions that will work for us and L.A. Animal employees fairly and honestly, we will support that person to move toward a real low-kill solution rather than the illusion we have today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Beth, Laura Beth Helsen.
Good morning.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Laura Beth Helsen.
Helsen, excuse me.
I'm a former commissioner of the Board of L.A. Animal Services, a humane organization leader, and a government law enforcement attorney. I follow L.A.A.S. closely. When you had issues before you regarding our last general manager, the staff and the humane community were divided. Today, we come to you united. We have different roles in this, we have different roles in the shelters and in the community, yet we stand together in seeing the same problems. Let's focus on a few non-animal issues. A budget so out of control that we this month needed an emergency infusion of $1 million just to avoid devastating layoffs. An animal shelter we paid $19 million to build is still not open to the public. We paid to build six brand-new Proposition F spay-neuter clinics, each one desperately needed. Today, each one sits unused. Your constituents cannot get the services they need. Two recent audits, both horrible. Controller Chig documented $2 million in receivables. Bokes and Barth just did not bother sending forward for collection. Another million dollars in licenses not sold. Bad judgment. Remember hooters and the painted elephant fiascos? Serious liability risks like the Pitbull Academy. The worst, in my view, deception. Bokes blames the shelter staff and managers for his operational results. But he failed to deliver the plans and genuine programs they can use. And with over 17,000 dogs and cats euthanized in the 12 months ending July 31, 2008, plus another more than 1,000 dying in his overcrowded shelters, contrary to Bokes' claim this month on his city blog, we are not at, nor anywhere near, 95% no-kill. Euthanasia is up by 37%. We need to stop groups like ADL. Bokes and Barth's behavior only validates and empowers such groups.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Phyllis Doherty.
Good morning, Phyllis Doherty with Animal Services Movement. I want you to notice that the employees that are here today are not asking for their jobs. They've already had their jobs saved. So you know that they are here because they're here from their hearts. They are very, very concerned about what's happening in the shelters. We're all concerned about that. When you hired Mr. Bokes, you did not ask him about administration, about how he would carry on the programs, what he would develop for this department. He was hired for one reason, to make the city look as if it is no-kill. And that obviously is a myth, and it's unkind, and it is going to result in horrible conditions in the shelter because you cannot keep fight-trained animals in the same cage with golden retrievers and people's pets without having disasters every day. The old and the ill animals are being held when they should be put down. When people come in from your districts and they cannot afford $150 to have their 16-year-old animal put down, we don't put it down. We hold on to it because we feel it hasn't suffered long enough. These employees have to watch that. Mr. Bokes does not go in the shelters, he has not worked in the shelters, so he does not understand the situation. You have the best management team in the world right here. They know the answers to all the problems, but nobody listens to them. They don't all have all of the answers, but if you circulated a petition and had each of them ask in your area of expertise, "What is the best way to run this department?", you could have the finest animal control department in this country. So it's time, it's time to listen to them. It's time for our shelters to stop worrying about being no-kill and start worrying about being humane, both to the animals and to the employees.
Thank you very much, Ms. Doherty. We have some other speakers, but I believe that may be the only ones that were here on this issue. And Mr. Zein wanted to give a brief response, and Mr. Alacon as well. Mr. Zein?
Thank you, Mr. President. To the city employees, Animal Services, thank you for coming here this morning. I've heard these cries for help. I've heard from representatives, from the supervisors, from the community, from animal rights groups. And, Mr. Pres, I make a recommendation that this entire matter come before the Personnel Committee, which I chair. We will hear the grievances of the employees, we'll have a full public hearing on it. We can make a recommendation from the Personnel Committee to this body and hopefully bring this matter to conclusion because it's frustrating for the employees, it's frustrating for the people of the city of Los Angeles. Another matter that I want to also emphasize, if there's any retaliation against any employee from being here or speaking out, I need to know personally, we will not accept any type of retaliation.
Thank you, Mr. Zein. Thank you, Mr. Zein.
So, Mr. President, with the indulgence of this council, to assist these city employees and to bring this matter to conclusion, I make the recommendation to go to Personnel Committee.
Okay, we will have to do that. Since it's not agendized as a formal item, Mr. Zein will be working to do that, to put it in his committee. Can't make a formal motion here today, but he has assured us that he will bring that before committee, so we appreciate that. Mr. Alacon and Mr. Rosendahl, again, 50 words or less, please, under the Brown Act.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend particularly the city employees for stepping forward and raising these complaints. As a former president of Employee Association for the city of Los Angeles, I know what you're putting on the line when you step forward and talk about the department and try to shed a bright light where we need the bright light to shine. So thank you so much. You're not falling on deaf ears. We, I will work with Mr. Zein and Cardenas and all the others who have expressed a deep desire to improve our animal services, and especially with the goal of establishing a no-kill city in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Zein, I'm gonna second your motion when you get that going because that's very important. And I want to say to all of you who came here today, bless you for having the courage to stand up for what you believe in. I'm an animal lover, as you all know, and I went to the shelter the other day, picked up a couple of kittens, so I'm working on it, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas and Ms. Gruel, again, for brief responses. Mr. Cardenas?
Yeah, I'd just like to remind the people watching and also the people who came on public comment, that's what public comment is for, so that people can bring up issues and matters. You don't have to work for the city of Los Angeles. In this case, we heard from many, many people who work for our city and who care very deeply about the work that they do. So I want to personally thank you for coming forward. And as was mentioned by the chairman of the Personnel Committee, I'm on that committee as well. I look forward to hearing this matter in its fullest and hearing all sides of the matter so that we can get down to the bottom of it and move forward for the sake of the people who are putting their hearts and minds and their souls into their work in this department, and also, most importantly, for the animals. Thank you.
Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And I know, because it is public comment, we'll be brief. I just wanted to thank as well, I've had an opportunity to meet with many of you and senior correspondents, and we are listening. I just, I want you to know that, that we have been and appreciated your forthrightness, your conversations about how we can improve and the challenges that you faced. And I know Mr. Zein will schedule that meeting, but I wanted also to stand up and say thank you very much for all of you coming here, on your time to express your views, and the importance of animal services to all the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I know Mr. Zein will be introducing that motion, and we're very proud of all of our animal services workers. Thank you for all you do for the city of Los Angeles. And we will let you know as soon as that is scheduled for the Personnel Committee. And I believe there was one more speaker on this issue as well in Van Nuys, so my apologies to her. Lisa Goldberg, you'd like to give us your comments on this from Van Nuys as well, and then we'll move on to the other public comments speakers. Good morning, Ms. Goldberg.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Dear councilmembers, thank you so much for your time today. I'm just a citizen. I'm here today to tell you of a situation which involves an animal cruelty complaint, five people, of which of ours won, presented to Mr. Bokes in regards to a local animal rescuer who, among numerous other things, had four dogs mauled at her house in a nine-month period of time. Three of those dogs died, while one nearly decapitated narrowly escaped death. As Ms. Gruel is my councilwoman, I have sent a copy of the documentation to her office and hope you will all avail yourselves of the full chronology of this situation. Long story short, Mr. Bokes, the director of L.A.A.S., never conducted an investigation. He verbalized he conducted it, but when the full file was sent to us as part of the public information request, it was clear nothing had been investigated. Mr. Bokes' remedy was to wash his hands of the situation and return this rescuer's New Hope license to her. This is unacceptable behavior, and apparently one in a long list you are hearing today. Please do something about it. Take a look at the package when Ms. Gruel receives it, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. We will, again, we thank all of the employees on that issue and our advocates from the community. Our next speaker for public comment is Donna Periman, also out in Van Nuys, and then we'll hear from Rick Nightingale. Good morning, Ms. Periman.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, I asked the people to please don't vote for the parcel tax. It's just another way to misuse our property taxes. Our property taxes are already too high for the average middle class to afford. The city council is always misusing our money and asks for more. Why wouldn't it happen now? Please vote no on the sales tax increases, only for high-priced transportation systems. Also, why doesn't the police and fire department have to pay the extra copay on the medical if the other city employees have to pay? Councilman Zein either said either all or none. I prefer personally that no city employee has to pay extra. Revoke it. But if you can't, let's make it fair and across the board. Let's have all the city employees do it, or none of the city employees. Why doesn't you give it with one hand and take away with another? I do not want the subway to the sea unless the Councilman Rosendahl gives me a ride or someone he knows. If they tear up Wilshire, we'll stop the city. If you can't take, if you take public transit, it will be hard if Wilshire is closed. It will just be overcrowded in the other streets. I ask, please, Councilman Weiss, if Councilman Rosendahl doesn't think that he should do it, I think you should do it because it will ruin West Los Angeles, your area. And I want to tell people that if you see any things like parcel taxes, please don't vote for them. They're just gonna go up on your taxes, and we already have trash tax and extra trash tax and phone tax. We certainly can't be taxed anymore on this. So vote no on these things, and let's be fair on these city employees, and let's make it across the board. And I hope you're paying extra copay, too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale, also in Van Nuys, and then we'll come back to Kim Karnakian here in council chambers.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightingale. Well, here we go again. I couldn't believe when Fannie Mae and Fannie Mac turned around and now the government's taken over. It goes right back to the same situation of back in the '70s, that everybody swore it wouldn't happen again, they learned their lesson, and all the banks and everything else, and here we go again. How does everybody think the government's supposed to bail them out? It's just unbelievable. The council here with the waiver fees, I don't think that you really, down in your heart, think you're having a money problem. I really don't. You pass up money where you can. Now the government, or the state of California, they're sitting on their leisure for 70 days. I think personally they should take all their perks away, their credit cards, their cars and everything else, let them bring their own cars and get something done up there. But no, it just keeps going on and on because they're not doing their job. One party says, "Don't raise taxes," the other one wants to raise taxes. We don't want to raise taxes. But no, now they're bickering and squaloring and nothing can be done. And everybody blames Schwarzenegger, and it ain't his fault because he's the governor and they're the one that runs the state. Schwarzenegger a long time ago tried to turn around and stop this to get a balanced budget just like you people should have, and you don't, because you don't spend more than what comes in. You had a cash pig for so long, well, like you won the lottery when the properties went up so high, and if anybody didn't think they were gonna come down, you belong up in space because it was gonna happen. I mean, I'm not a real educated person, and you people are supposed to be, and you guys do not get it. You just don't get it that it was gonna stop. But no, you didn't put anything in the bank like us normal people are supposed to, to pay bills. You gotta pay, you gotta spend every dollar you get. And now it turns around and it's gone, and then you want us to pay more because you people messed up and put it all in the toilet. And same is of California up north. Turn around and put it in the toilet. Now why do we have to keep spending? You people better learn that. Do something like you're getting paid for with all these other committees and balance the budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nightingale. We actually did pass our budget in two and a half weeks of deliberation and about a month and a half early. That is balanced, and we do have a reserve fund for precisely what you're talking about, That is balanced, and we do have a reserve fund for precisely what you're talking about, but we appreciate your opinion, and we will do that as we have each year, again, this coming year. Our next speaker is Kim Karnikin, is our next speaker? Is Kim Karnikin here? If not, Matt Dowd is our next speaker. Mr. Dowd?
All right, thank you. And thanks to Wendy Gruel for a nice warm welcome to chambers for Matt Dowd. I appreciate that. You softened me up a little. But I was listening to council phone, what happened to Zuma Dog, and let me tell you, the guy has a political blog that's famous in the City of Los Angeles. If anyone's in the jurisdiction of the City of Los Angeles right now, it's Zuma Dog. Nobody else pays more attention than him. So, that's my public statement on behalf of that little episode. You're actually, you know what you're doing? You're making him a hero, a folk hero. Every time you try and squelch him, you're actually making him stronger. So, my next boo of the day goes to the city attorney because at Van Nuys, he shut me down, Mr. Garcetti. I was talking about you, I was talking about Obama, how he's going to lose the federal election, and this city gets money from the federal government, so it's of paramount importance who wins and what happens, especially when your Democrats sitting up there. So, I'm congratulating Greg Smith for being a front-running, forward-thinking Republican who's going to be on the winning team, because I've seen how he works around here, too. Greg Smith's performance is A-plus. Mr. City Attorney, A-plus. Congratulations, Greg Smith, and Dennis Zine. In fact, I've got to thank Dennis Zine's office. It's a first in the City of Los Angeles, the city council contacted Matt Dowd. Oh, my God, thank you. They're taking a Venice issue to the police. It's an LAPD thing, and now someone finally in three years since I wrote my very first letter, which was ignored. I'm still waiting for Council District 11, Bill Rosendahl, to actually get a call, anything. It's been nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. That will close our general public comment. If we can go to the items that have been called special, please. First item.
Item two was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. That was Mr. Dog's card. We will note that and add that to the file. Any members wishing to be heard on this item? If not, can we please open the roll?
And, Mr. President, again, this is to receive and file the matter.
Yes, correct. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That will be received and filed. Next item, please.
Item five called special for cards from the public.
Okay. We also have a card from Matt Dowd on this one, and then we'll note Mr. Dog's card as well. Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I heard him get kicked out, so I raced over here to take up. I'm just going to say what I think Zuma might have said on some of these issues. So, item number five, Mr. City Attorney, gee, amending sections of the Los Angeles Municipal Code related to application fees. Now, let me guess, are they going up or they going down? So, I think if Zuma was here, he'd be guessing they're going up, like everything else in the City of Los Angeles, it's all going up. They need money, they're broke, they're writing parking tickets, you have people here for all kinds of things because the city needs money, because the mayor is out of town running around after presidential candidates. So, the City of Los Angeles is deeply involved in that.
That will close our public comment for this one. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 16 called special by Councilmember Cardenas, and I believe there is a card on this.
Okay, Mr. Dowd on item 16, and then we'll go to Mr. Cardenas.
You know, it's, it's, it's one of the biggest issues in the city, the youth development, gang reduction, and it's a tough one. It's very tough, but we've seen what happened when you throw money at these things, they end up in the wrong hands, and people end up buying guns with city money in these gang programs. So, you know, you need to get some professional people, not the mayor. The mayor is just a career politician. Don't have the mayor involved in any of these gang programs. Get professional psychologists and doctors. The mayor's running around after Hillary and, and, you know, they just proved that they're too busy fighting for who's going to be the Democratic nominee, and they end up losing the whole thing in the end. Just watch.
That will close our comments on item 16. Mr. Cardenas called the special. Mr. Cardenas?
Is there anybody here who can speak to this item from the mayor's office and also the CLA? Okay.
Good morning. I'm Felipe Chavez with the CLA's office. Before you today is a report from our office recommending a scope of work for a combined request for qualifications, request for proposals for the provision of gang intervention services in the city's 12 gang reduction and youth development zones. The recommended scope of work anticipates a process that combines a request for qualifications and request for proposals, and that proposers will be considered according to specific qualification requirements before consideration of full proposals. This would alleviate the need for two separate procurement processes. In preparing the draft scope of work, we researched RFPs and RFQs issued in the past, and at the request of the committee, we considered public input. The scope of work is consistent with the community-based gang intervention model, and it lays out the expected type and level of gang intervention services that are to be provided in each designated gang reduction zone. We also developed general scoring criteria, which is divided into three major categories: experience, administrative capacity, and service delivery. Based on priorities expressed by the community and the committee, greater emphasis is placed on experience over the other two categories.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Mildred Lopez. I'm with the mayor's office of gang reduction and youth development. I'm here to just state that the mayor's office thanks the chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gang Violence and Youth Development for the scope of work as well as for the recommendations identified in the motion as we move forward in issuing our gang intervention RFP.
Okay. Thank you, Mildred. Appreciate that. And at the same time, one of the themes that we've all been talking about for a few years now, and certainly this mayor has confided in me that he certainly agrees that transparency and making sure that we have a much more comprehensive feedback system so that we can constantly improve our efforts and make sure that we are understanding what we're doing day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year, so we can constantly evolve and improve that. So, with that, I anticipate I will be having a recommendation along those lines as well to add to the report. But in the meantime, question to the CLA. To your knowledge, have you, do you know or aware of any other entity within the city who's either, who has either revised or expanded the current procurement process for intervention services?
No, not to our knowledge.
Including the Advancement Project report, did it recommend specifically on this item, as far as you're aware?
No, both reports recommended broad policies.
You're talking about that report and the Controller's report, correct?
Right.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, both recommended broad policy recommendations, but they were not specific to any procurement processes.
Okay. Can you let the public understand not everybody sees what happens in committee? I'm asking you a question I already asked you in committee. But can you describe one of the ways in which the CLA listened or heard from the community and incorporated that into their thought process and their recommendations?
Yes. The, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gang Violence had two, I believe it was two, at two meetings, two separate meetings, had public comment, and service providers came to the table and provided their input relative to this RFP, RFQ. And the CLA was, you know, considered every piece of public comment, and we basically took what would enhance the process and what was a benefit to the youth that we included in our report.
Okay. So, ultimately, much of the information that was given in those public comment had to do with how to benefit the community, i.e., the constituents that we serve, in some cases, gang members themselves or children, hopefully, who won't become gang members if we're effective in this work, correct?
Yes.
Okay. What's the fundamental difference between the current proposal that we have before us and the previous LA Bridges procurement process?
Well, this specific one has, is a combined RFQ and RFP, and also this, this process took into account heavily community input.
Okay. See, it's my understanding that sometimes I need a highly technical or highly specialized work. Governments, for example, will have an RFQ process and see who even has the skills sets first and foremost, and then upon that, then decide to go out with an RFP to see which of those folks or organizations want to go ahead and vie for the opportunity to actually fulfill some contracts with the city. That, that's basically what an RFQ and an RFP process, if we combine it like in this proposal, would be like.
Correct.
Okay. Not strictly, but that's one of the potential options. Okay. Does your report require agencies to form linkages with other current city-funded social service agencies?
Yes.
Okay. And there's something called a two-pronged approach when it comes to intervention, and how was the current proposal tied into that?
The, the current proposal took into account and actually includes the, the gang intervention model, the two-pronged approach.
And that was something adopted by the, the city council?
By council.
And hopefully utilized, well, instructed departments, all departments, including the mayor's office, was asked and/or instructed to go ahead and incorporate that in these, in these kinds of contracts, in these kinds of activities, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, this proposal's consistent with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. To, to a question to the mayor's office, what impact would an RFP, RFQ have on the delivery of intervention services within the gang, the gang reduction zones?
Well, as you know, currently, the mayor's grid office is overseeing existing LA Bridges 2 gang intervention contracts, so those are continuing up until December 31st.
They're transitioning, basically?
Yes, up until December 31st of this year. As you know, we've also identified 12 grid zones across the city. We anticipate that we'll be issuing an RFP in early October specifically to support gang intervention services beginning January 1st up until June 30th, and they should be renewable up to three years after that.
Okay. All right. And renewable up to three years is a standard practice within the city?
Yes. Obviously, we're going to be setting up measurable goals and outcomes, so what, you know, once we evaluate them and monitor them to make sure that they're performing as, as their contract states, then we would renew their contracts.
Okay. And the mayor's office anticipates actually following through with more reporting on these kinds of contracts than ever before, correct?
Absolutely.
So, we're going to be more transparent, more scrutiny, we're going to have, and also, we anticipate that we're going to have a better support system for the, the organizations that eventually will be doing this work, correct? A lot more correspondence, a lot more dialogue, a lot more ongoing support, correct?
Absolutely. We've actually just hired our new deputy director of planning and administrative services, and he will be overseeing the constant monitoring and technical assistance that we'll be providing these agencies to help them set up, but also to be clear from day one in terms of what our expectations are with client tracking and, and, you know, service provision for these youth and families.
Okay. Now, how does the scope of the work differ from the intervention services as defined by the federally-funded GRP program?
Um...
How will you incorporate that in this framework, in the gang reduction strategy?
Well, as the gang intervention model currently states, the one that, that was supported by not only our office but by city council and all city departments, is that we're following this two-pronged approach. We're not only going to support the provision of services, for example, tattoo removal, job training, and job placement. We will also be fully supporting the work that, you know, a lot of the gang intervention workers do and, you know, are doing right now through the LA Bridges 2 contracts. So, you know, crisis response to gang-related homicides and shootings, as well as providing follow-up services to those victims of gang crime and violence. So, we are, the, the difference between the GRP, RFP, and the grid gang intervention RFP will be that, you know, we differentiate the service provision from the crisis response, so the gang intervention work.
Okay. Thank you. And at what point can we expect a performance metric, metrics developed by the mayor's office?
Performance metrics will be outlined initially in the RFP, which will come out in October. We will also be issuing an RFP for a citywide evaluation of the 12 grid zones, so those will, you know, outline measurable goals and outcomes for both prevention and intervention.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to request that the, an amendment to the report, and that is request that the mayor's office of gang reduction and youth development report back to the council relative to a draft scope of work prior to the release of the intervention RFQ, RFP proposal. Okay. And as usual, Mildred, the committee is more than ready and willing to set an agenda date so as to not interfere with the process as much as possible, as we've done in the past. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, good morning. Thanks for what you're doing, and thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for your leadership on this issue. Bless you, Wendy. There are two questions I have. I just had an incident in my district and the V-13, the Culver City Boys, and, and we've, we've had attacks on the bike path. I was all over the news Friday with, with my great captain, Hilton, there, dealing with the issue. We're CD 11, we don't get gang monies anymore because we're not part of the gang zones, which I think is outrageous. I don't agree with anybody on that. Gangs are everywhere, and in my particular district, we do have killings and beatings all the time. So, I'm upset, but here are my two questions. Maybe you can help me. Is this the process for intervention workers who intend to operate outside of the designated gang reduction zone? Do we get that opportunity at all, or is this just in those zones?
We've, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, what was your question again?
The question is, is this the process for intervention workers who intend to operate outside of the designated gang reduction zones?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
So, will they be able to come into my district and assist me with my bike path issue in Delray and the issues I'm having with the gangs in the neighborhood, fighting with themselves and fighting against innocent constituents?
They will actually be given an opportunity to apply for outside funding. We've identified $2.4 million specifically to serve areas outside of the grid zones. So, if they submit an application for gang intervention, then for your particular area in the Venice area or Mar Vista area, and they were awarded that contract, then yes, they would be able to respond to...
Okay. Because I'm going to need your help in doing that, because when I walked with the police down the bike path, I found four holes in the fences. I saw a spot where a gang group sits right by the edge of a bridge and jumps out at the bicyclists as they're coming by and nail them, and jump at people pushing strollers, and I need help on that. Do we have any update on the funding for programs operating outside of the gang reduction zones? What do I need to do right now to move forward with this?
At the same time that we'll be issuing the RFP for gang intervention for the 12 grid zones, we will also be issuing an RFP for the $2.4 million for outside of the grid zones. So, we'd be more than happy to work with your office in outreach, you know, in your particular community, letting those agencies know that this funding is available and bringing them into, you know, the bidders conferences, the pre-bidders conferences, to notify them as to when the deadlines are, what we're expecting in terms of the scope of work and delivery of services.
Okay. It's very critical to me because Delray, the Mar Vista area, and the Venice area with Oakwood and, and, and the Mar Vista projects, we have a lot of energy going back and forth and a lot of issues among those gang groups. So, I look forward to you sitting down with us and working on some plans.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. If we can please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, did you wish to take up items 29 and 31?
Sure. We will note Mr. Dog's cards on both of those items, 29 and 31, if any members wish If any members wish to be heard on those. If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 17 called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Dowd. Item 17. Mr. Dowd here. Okay. Mr. Dog's card will be noted as well. Close the public hearing on those. If we can open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved as well. Next item, please.
Item 20 called special for cards.
Okay. Mr. Dowd again. I think he has left. Mr. Dog will be noted. And we have Donna Perman out in Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Perman.
Good morning. Anyway, I wish you would let Zuma Dog speak on the issues. He should be able to endorse a council member, Bernard Parks. Anyway, he was on topic. Anyway, I tell you again, these fee waivers are sometimes nice events, especially that one over there, Greg Smith's movie, Under the Stars, that was recently. But the problem is, we can't afford to keep on waiving any and all fees. Our biggest one is the Marcus Garvey Parade for $12,638. Our city is literally falling apart and without, with our huge fee waivers tomorrow. We have two fee waivers, one for $80,000, 250, Farmers Market, one for $24,737, LA's Birthday Party for $10,561, New Ceeo B and Festival, and Jubilee for $7,123. I will be there tomorrow, so I want to say that I'm against these fee waivers, too. I want to put it on record that I'm against all these fee waivers because we can't afford it. We can't have these huge fee waivers. In the meantime, we're asked to pay more money and many other ways, whether extra taxes. And if, Mr. Garcetti, if we do have extra money, can't we use some of this money for these fee waivers? And why do we have to, why does everything have to go up? You balance the budget on future money, on future money that you're going to expect on pop S and the extra trash fees and our extra sales tax. So I'm against all these fee waivers. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're sorry we missed you in Van Nuys on Friday, but we'll look forward to seeing you next month. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Item 28 called special by Councilmember Hahn. And there are two votes required on this item.
Okay. Ms. Hahn, item number 28 is before us.
Colleagues, this is a 245 that I would like your support in taking jurisdiction of this item. And instead of just outright vetoing it, I'd like us to take jurisdiction of it and send it to TOMS Committee, Arts and Parks. In a nutshell, here's the deal. You know, since I've been elected, you've heard me talk over and over again about Wilmington and the neglect that that community has suffered for many years, the environmental risks that they take just by waking up every morning. And this community is probably more park poor and soccer field poor than any place in Los Angeles. We finally built our Wilmington Recreation Center, a full-size gym, which the community's been waiting for 50 years. Right across from this gym is an abandoned railroad piece of property. It would be perfect for soccer fields. Perfect. It's called the Wilmington Green Belt. No one else wants that property. The railroad doesn't want that property. I've been in negotiations with Union Pacific for a couple of years now, trying to get them to sell that property to Los Angeles at a decent price. Naturally, there's environmental issues, naturally. All of Wilmington has environmental issues. I finally got the railroad to realize that it would cost us more money to clean it up than they were asking us to pay for. They then turned around and said they would donate free of charge to the city of Los Angeles, this piece of property. We've already done our first phase environmental. We know there's some contamination. We have the money to clean it up. What we don't have is, I guess, some release of all future liability that may exist that we don't know about in the future. UP doesn't want to assume that. They want to give us the property and then we, it's kind of like we get what we take. The city attorneys naturally are very nervous about this. And the Wreckin' Parks Commission, to my great sadness, denied at their last meeting the opportunity to accept this property for the kids in Wilmington. I think having kids play soccer in an area in Wilmington far outweighs any liability that we might assume in the future. So I'd like to take jurisdiction of their action. I disagree with it. But let's take it to Wreckin' Parks. Let's talk a little bit more about it. Let's maybe get on the phone with UP and see if we can't come to some resolution. Because I guarantee you, these kids are playing in the same space anyway. So for us to develop it as a soccer park, I think makes complete sense. And we've got to figure out in the city, how do we reconcile environmental issues with the ability of kids to play on developed pieces of property, parks, soccer fields? We've got to figure this out. And so I hope you'll support me in this. Let's take jurisdiction, send it to TOMS Committee, and figure out a way that we can take this property from a railroad who doesn't use it anymore and develop it into a place that kids can have something to do besides roaming the streets in Wilmington. So I ask for your support.
Thank you very much. We'll take a vote first on asserting jurisdiction. If we can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is asserted. And if there's no objection to sending it to Mr. Labanja's committee, then we will send it to committee. Thank you. Forthwith. Next item, or next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Wednesday, October 8th, to leave at noon for city business that meets council policy.
All right, Ms. Hahn is excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Tuesday, September 16th, to arrive at 11:00 and for Tuesday, October 7th, to arrive at 10:30. Both for city business and both meet council policy.
Okay, those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Weesar requests to be excused Tuesday, October 21st, for city business that meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Wednesday, October 15th, for city business that meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Tuesday, November 18th, for personal business that meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused to arrive at 11:30 for tomorrow's meeting and for the entire meeting of Tuesday, September 23rd. Both for city business. A motion is required for tomorrow.
Okay, I will move that. Ms. Gruhl, seconds without objection.
And last, Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused to leave at noon for the remaining Wednesdays of the year to attend the county sanitation board meetings. And those all meet council policy.
Okay. That excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk.
Any business announcements, colleagues, committee, or anything else? Not? Mr. Labanja?[1688.15]